At this time, 15.0 is superintendent's report and board, this is for the rest of the agenda is for information only, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Little. Dr. Little?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If Mr. Smith would go and make his way forward, just to let you know, we wanted to get an update on White Nile Middle School. White Nile Middle School was named a priority school this year, and we wanted to have Mr. Smith come and talk about what they've been working on and about what their plan is moving forward. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Little. I want to also thank Dr. Tally and Ms. Hill. They contributed to this and gave some input. I appreciate that. And members of the board, on behalf of everybody at White Nile Middle School, appreciate the opportunity to share some of what we're doing, and we realize that you guys' support and resources make possible the work that we are doing. We'll start out talking a little bit about challenges and opportunities, and purposely name this slide that way because I think it's tremendously important that we look at these things in that way, that these do present some challenges for us, but it also provides some super opportunities for us going forward. We recognize, and our data shows us, that we have some achievement gaps that we can continue to need to address. We particularly see these gaps among our students of poverty, our minority students, and our male students, particularly in the area of language arts. And it was interesting, just this morning in a training we were involved in, some of these cut across the district as well, so these are not peculiar to us necessarily. We also, as a school and community in White Nile Middle, we continue to see a rising poverty index, last measure approximately 61 percent, and it's, of course, critical that we continue to work with our students and families of poverty. We also have a growing ESOL population. Currently, just looked at numbers this morning, last year we ended the year with 84 students who were identified as English language learners, and currently, as we rolled over in Power School, we have 81, I think, for next year. That's a 40 percent increase from 2017, 18 to 2018, 19, and staying, looks like it's staying about steady going forward. That, of course, those learners makes up about 10 percent of our population. We're right at 800, a little over right now. They certainly bring some challenges with them, but they also bring tremendous work ethic, and also some tremendous opportunities they bring with us in our population. Overall, we continue to have a growing, more diverse student population, and that kind of cuts across a lot of things economically, racially, and ethnically, and again, that presents us some great opportunities as we embrace and celebrate that diversity going forward. Our student population is also continuing to show some transience. Last year, well over 150 students enrolled at White Nile Middle after the year began, and a little less than that exited us during the year. So that's a lot, a lot of comings and goings. We know, and matter of fact, that's identified as one of our risk factors throughout the district. We know that brings certain challenges for those students, obviously, and also for our staff as they try to integrate those folks into our culture and into our instruction. We also looked hard at our current schedule, and this happened across the district at the middle school level. Like most of our middle schools, in the past, we have had a schedule that allocated approximately 45, excuse me, 55 minutes for our core classes of language arts, math, science, and social studies, and also our students taught, excuse me, our teachers were teaching five classes a day, so generally, a core teacher would be dealing with upwards of 125 or so students during the day and trying to get things done in 55 minutes. So those are some of the things that we looked at as we began to try to address some of what was going on.
How many total students do you have on that?
We're right at, we finished the year at, I think, 8:10. We're projecting about 8:30 for next year. So we are beginning to see some more growth again in the White Nile area as well. We've had a few new neighborhoods come in and that sort of thing, so we're starting to see some more growth. Want to talk about some steps that were taken last year, what's happening this summer, and what our plan is for next year going forward. And we thank you guys and senior leadership for recognizing some of our needs. Think I just died? But during the year, last year in January, we had four additional positions that were approved, an additional ESOL teacher, an ELA and math teacher, two positions, those were intended as intervention positions and instructional coaching position. We worked to fill those, and we were able to fill two of those with what we thought were very strong candidates. Two we did not fill because we just didn't have good candidates to put in place at the time. But we ended up with a very strong ESOL teacher and a strong additional math intervention Obviously, our most important interventions have to do with instruction, and so these things have been going on throughout the year and going forward. Our instructional coaching is focused on student engagement and the workshop model and effective technology integration, and that's true across the district. We're very fortunate, we have an outstanding literacy coach, Dr. Lett, and we have also an outstanding digital integration coach, Ms. Brooks. Going forward, we also began last year to work on a push-in model of support for our response to intervention students, our RTI students. So we still did a little bit of pull-out to serve those kids, pulling them out of exploratory classes and scheduling them into RTI classes, but we worked hard to get a solid model of push-in, so our RTI teachers are going in and co-teaching with our core language arts and math teachers. And we feel that was successful. We'll be looking to see that that shows up in our results. Next year, going forward, we're also going to be pushing in more with our special education resource students and teachers and our ESOL teachers as well. So we really feel that this provides a model in which those teachers are co-teaching, they can see what's going on with those students firsthand every day, and they can intervene directly as they see what those students need.
I think we saw that model when we were touring Carolina Springs Middle, didn't we? It was really impressive because you could really see that they were helping the students that were kind of struggling, and the teacher could continue with the class, but the other teachers were kind of helping those kids stay caught up. So I thought it was a real impressive model.
Thank you. And it's a model that requires some coaching for our teachers because we don't want those intervention teachers to be simply helpers or to get stuck in just doing particular things. We want them to truly be co-teachers, working hand in hand and knowing what's going on with those kids every day. As you know, we are a priority status school, and we received some funding for that, so I want to kind of update you on what has occurred with that since, with support from instruction and district leadership. We put together what we feel is a plan that really connects well with our school goals and with the district strategic plan. Had four main parts, to add a mathematics instructional coach, to enhance our ELA classroom libraries, to provide more quality professional learning for our math teachers, and to add summer enrichment. And kind of where those each are at this point, we have onboard a mathematics coach for next year. It's actually one of our teachers, Ms. Tiffany Scholl. She was one of our district Teacher of the Year finalists a year ago, outstanding instruction, outstanding procedures, and great with data, so we're excited about her working with our math teachers and coaching them up. We feel like that will kind of flesh out our coaching model with a literacy coach, a math coach, and a digital literacy coach. So we're excited about that. Our classroom libraries, we are in the process of spending that money and fleshing out those libraries, and we're particularly looking at titles that are of interest to males and minority students, since that showed up in our data as areas we needed to address. We have signed a contract for three lab site visits with the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics to work with our math teachers, and they'll get hands-on coaching and go directly into putting that into practice. And we are running this summer a summer enrichment camp. Every summer, we have students who need to go to summer school or we have to consider for retention or promotion. What we did with this, this summer is going on right now, we took those students in our sixth and seventh grade, our rising seventh and eighth grade students, who would have generally gone to our district online summer school, which is a good thing, but we wanted to get them back in our building. We have four of our teachers who are working with this program. Those kids are coming for four days a week, a half a day for four weeks. And it was really interesting as we started this out, we started calling parents about this, and their first questions were things like, well, how much is this going to cost? And the answer was, no worries, we got it. And how about transportation? We were allowed, we were able to provide transportation, we're providing some supplies, and we're also doing a couple of educational field trips, one this Thursday. So parents were extremely excited, our teachers were excited, we kind of reminded ourselves, these 30 kids walking in the door Monday morning a week ago might not be quite as excited, but, and they weren't, they kind of drug in a little bit. But what's been really interesting is they have become excited about it, too. So it's become, we're kind of studying them a little bit because part of what we're looking at is why did these kids not have success? And so we're going to look at that hard, and our kids are, we're hoping to give them some tools to take away. We're doing some basic language arts, some basic math, study skills, and also team building. So we're excited to see what's going to happen with this.
Do you provide any meals for those classes?
We're also providing meals, we're working with the summer lunch program, which is actually, one of the programs is right next door at White Nile Elementary, so we go down and get those meals, and so we're serving them lunch before they go home as well.
That works out well, to come do that side by side.
And is this rising seventh and eighth graders? Is that what you said?
That's correct. We decided to focus on them, we had, you know, limited numbers we could serve. Our rising ninth graders, we had them go ahead and do the regular summer school program to make sure they were prepared for White Nile High School. Couple of shots of the kids involved in that. The two on the left, one of the things we did for summer reading, we had each child select two books from the summer reading list. We just got those in, and again, surprisingly, they were excited about getting books in their hands, so we hope they're at home reading right now.
Yeah, sounds good.
The other big change we've made going forward with support from senior leadership and the board is a new schedule. That required some additional FTE, as you all know, and we thank you for that. What we're doing with our schedule, and I'll show you the bell schedule in a minute, world language is going to move to kind of a third exploratory track. Our core classes, our traditional core of language arts, math, science, and social studies, those classes will increase by about 10 minutes to about 65 minutes, give or take a minute, and that's a win. The other win is that core teachers with that schedule will now teach four classes a day instead of five. They're still going to be teaching basically the same amount of time during the day, but that will reduce the number of students they work with every day. And our exploratory and world language classes now will come about 45 minutes as opposed to 50. We will be using a push-in model for all three of our special support areas, special ed, RTI, and ESOL. And we also are continuing our advisor, advisee time, we call ours soaring, similar to some of the other schools' crew and whatnot, but ours is soaring since we're hawks.
Now, are we modeling this at some other schools, too, or is it just, I know you talked about the time changes at some of our, is this, are we doing it at other schools?
Yeah, so the middle school schedule is changing at Beechwood Middle, at White Nile Middle, at Pillion Middle, and partially at Gilbert Middle, perhaps Pleasant Hill Middle, I'm not sure if they landed on that or not, and I feel like I'm missing one that's changing. Is Lexington Middle also changing?
Yes.
Okay. So is that maybe most of them? Most if not all. In some form or fashion, there will be schedule changes to most of the schools.
Okay, thank you.
And our schedule very much mirrors Beechwood. We kind of worked together on some of that, I think they presented a while back. It's a little confusing, I primarily put this slide in for our human resources folks, they came and subbed for us on May 1st, so when they went and did an awesome job, so when they want to come back, there's a bell schedule for you guys. But you can see in here that the time's around 65 minutes or so for core, about 45 for exploratory and world language. Our grade level teams will have some big chunks of time. Our exploratories back up to each other, so they'll have big chunks of time to plan, to have the meetings we need to do, and this will even allow us, from time to time, we need to bring in other folks like our directors to do some work with our ELA teachers, for instance, or whatever. So it gives us a big chunk of time that these guys can really dig in and get some work Obviously, there are some trade-offs, we acknowledge that. World language time is being reduced, and exploratory classes will be slightly shorter in length as well, but students will continue to have multiple quality exploratory options in fine art, and almost all of our students will still be receiving world language instruction. The big wins, if you do the math, our students end up with about 30 additional hours in their core classes across the course of the year. 65 minutes, 65 as opposed to 55 may not sound like a lot, but that extra 10 minutes allows our folks to implement, we believe, with more fidelity, the workshop model and the models of instruction we're trying to get done. I've often been in classes in that last few minutes when you're kind of evaluating on whether there's good closure or whether they kind of have time for reflection, and you feel pretty bad not giving a teacher credit when they've really just run out of time. Our teachers have access to quality coaching in all three of those areas. We've got ample time for professional learning, and world language will remain an important part of our curriculum. We do feel all this connects to our system commitments, students advancing on time, our summer program, we believe is part of that, making sure we have supports in place for students through our push-in model is part of that. Power skills for all students, we're going to continue to work on that through our soaring time and our exploratory classes and across the curriculum. Family and community partnerships, again, it's been very interesting to see how our parents have responded to what we're doing with scheduling and particularly with our summer program. And through our coaching support, our math lab sites, and the time we have in place to work with our teachers, we believe we will be able to help every adult be equipped with what they need to take care of our kids. So we're excited about the opportunity to do something a little different with our schedule, and we believe it is a big win for our kids.
Questions, board, from Mr. Smith? I'd like to ask Dr. Little and Mr. Smith if we could schedule you to come back in the late fall and kind of give us an update on how all this is transpiring and what your, I'd like, you know, to hear what your teachers think, how they, if they think it's helped them, because this, some of these are pretty big changes, so thank you for doing all that.
We're bored of this as well, I think.
Oh, that's great, yeah. So we'll get to see it in person. Okay. Anything else, board? Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dr. Little?
All right. We have also another great presentation tonight from two of our fine folks, Dr. Erica Bissell and Hillary Morgan, who are, they're going to discuss transformative professional learning that shifts instructional practice. I know we're excited about that at 9:20 at night, we're ready to go.
I won't say I'm getting signals from my colleagues to not belabor the point, but we'll, we'll get to it. We want to give you a really good overview, and it's actually a great follow-up to what Mr. Smith just shared because I think a lot of what Ms. Morgan and I are going to talk about tonight is having a direct impact on teaching and learning, and some of the changes that White Nile has put into place is going to allow us to have more access to teachers to really help shift those, the instructional practice. So we actually just shared this presentation at SCASA a week ago, it was very well received, and we call it Show, Don't Tell. And the reason for that is we really have been studying professional learning and what works and what doesn't, and we've come to the conclusion, and through a lot of feedback and reflection, that we tell teachers to do a lot of things, but we don't ever show them how to do it and what it looks like in real practice with real children. And so we have several structures, we're going to go through them quickly, we'll be happy to expand if you wish, and we can always come back, and it might even be really healthy to have some teachers come talk about it because I think you would find that they are just over the moon about the opportunities that we provide here for them in Lexington School District One. So the first structure is model classrooms, and model classrooms are a way for teachers to lead from where they are. And so we believe, of course, in leadership at all levels, and teacher leadership is of the utmost importance. And so in a model classroom, it allows for teachers to showcase their instructional practice and have others come and see them kind of in the trenches with their kiddos, and have a healthy dialogue between practitioners to ask questions rather than Ms. Morgan or myself or our coaches, again, telling teachers what this should look like. They go ahead and go see it in a real-life classroom. And so Ms. Morgan's going to talk about kind of the basics of a model classroom.
And so our model classrooms are classrooms in which other teachers can observe the visible implementation of our instructional model, which is the workshop model, and the student engagement model. Our model classroom teachers provide high-quality instruction for all students, and these classrooms serve as, provide continual learning for both the model classroom teachers as well as the observers through observation, feedback, reflection, and coaching. On the next slide, you have some pictures from our model classrooms. We have on the left and the top middle, small group instruction happening. On the top right, you have one-on-one conferencing, and at the bottom, you have a mini lesson.
And so just a few teacher testimonials, again, I'll give you a moment just to read those, but the feedback from both model classroom teachers and visitors, which have included administrators and special education teachers and interventionists, so it's kind of run the gamut, even teaching assistants have gone on model classroom visits, and the feedback has been just remarkable. We were a little tentative about this because you can put model classroom teachers in a position where there may be some pushback in that there's some competition or a sense of jealousy that, why is this person chosen, not me? We have not seen any of that. It has been nothing but healthy conversation and dialogue, reflective practice, how did you get kids to do that? You know, oh my gosh, that's a great thing that I saw, I never thought about doing that, doing it that way. And so really, just this healthy, healthy interaction and dialogue, and we're looking for opportunities to build model classrooms into our teacher leadership growth opportunities so that other teachers who have a desire to add this to their leadership kind of resume will have the opportunity and know through a very transparent process how they can move into the model classroom role. And even thinking about some timeframes, maybe a model classroom teacher is a two-year stint, and then with the opportunity to either continue or decide, you know, there is a commitment here, you're opening your doors, you have to kind of be on your game each and every day, which our teachers come and do amazing things. But there's also a need for some downtime and for your kids to have a little bit of normalcy, although the kids and the teachers say they're so excited to have extra teachers in the classroom. If you're a teacher at heart, you can't help but sit next to a child who's learning to read or learning to be a mathematician and coach them. So the teachers of model classrooms are saying, my kids are getting double the teaching because when teachers are in my room, they can't help but coach a student along. So it's been, it's been a wonderful, wonderful thing. The process, again, we have a, we feel like we have a very, a really nice framework for how we get teachers scheduled for model classroom visits. We also require that it be very much like the pop cycle that is a part of our 4.0 evaluation system, not to say this has anything to do with evaluation, but I say that to say there's a pre-conference required before going to a model classroom so that you can set your goal of why you're going to visit rather than just going kind of willy-nilly, what is it that I really want to improve in my own practice that I'm going to go look for when I go to this model classroom? There's an observation tool that they complete while they're in the classroom, and then there's a post-conference where they reflect and set a personal, personal to them but professional goal on how to move their own practice forward. So that is also all done with, we call it an accompanying adult, either an administrator or a coach, so they have a thought partner who can then also remind them of the things that they saw, because when they're there, they're taking copious notes, and sometimes it's a lot to remember all of the wonderful and name the next step that you're going to take. And again, the part in here that's maybe not named so well, but it's been one of the most powerful parts, is we require a debrief after a model classroom visit between the visiting teacher and the model classroom teacher, and both teachers say that is the most powerful practice so that they can have, again, that healthy dialogue and ask questions and talk about how they make the moves that they make and why they make the moves that they make. And we just don't have enough time for that on a daily basis. You know, teachers are always asking for more collaboration time, so this is another opportunity for them to collaborate. The next structure is lab sites, and this is, Mr. Smith actually talked about this, and lab sites, the difference between a lab site and a model classroom, a model classroom is where, like Ms. Morgan said, it's visible implementation day in and day out. A lab site is really more like a teaching hospital, and think about it is in that I'm watching an expert practitioner model something, and then right there on the spot, I do the exact same practice with real children, and I get coached in my practice. So it's kind of like on the ground, and it's definitely something that pushes people outside of their comfort zone, but that's where the real learning happens. So again, I could tell teachers what a small group looks like, or I could say, here, watch me do a small group, and then you go do it with these three kids, and I'm going to talk you through it so that tomorrow you can go do it when I'm not there. So I'm going to remove myself as the scaffold, and you'll be prepared to then implement that structure the next day in your classroom. This, again, has been very well received, and we're doing lab sites and we have model classrooms, we didn't say K through 12, and we'll be adding pre-K, intervention, and special education, model classrooms, and engaging in lab sites with those folks as well. So it's running the gamut, it is not just for general education teachers, it's not just for elementary, we're trying to impact all teachers with these show, don't tell structures.
I think we've observed this, too, on some of our school tours, and it's very impressive as well.
Yeah. And so again, lab sites provide authentic opportunities for teachers to observe, learn, observe, engage through guided practice, and then engage in meaningful dialogue. And so our next slide illustrates the sequence of professional learning in a lab site experience. So on your left, the study group with teachers, we have an expert leading a group around new learning, and in this case, these are some of our high school math teachers, they're learning about the use of questioning and rich mathematical tasks to increase student engagement and generate mathematical discourse in their classes. After that new learning, they move into their classrooms and watch the expert demonstrate this new learning with actual students, their students, and then they immediately turn and try those practices with a different group of students. We then leave the classroom, we debrief the experience, the teachers reflect on this experience and set personal goals to move their practice forward.
And again, the teacher testimonials have been very powerful, and the thing that Ms. Morgan said that's so important is it's with their own children. When you go to a conference, typically, if you see something that looks amazing, sometimes the takeaway is, well, oh, but it's those kids, or, well, those aren't my kids, or they should come try that in my setting. Here, we're having this done in our Lexington One schools, we have model classrooms and lab sites happening in all of our feeder systems, so everybody's represented, all of our students are participating, and all of our students can meet the expectations we set for them, and so this really puts an exclamation point on that sometimes we have consultants come who have never even met our students, and they have them questioning at high levels, they have them applying, you know, amazing reading skills without even the relationship that our teachers have the opportunity to build. So there, they come in, and they come in for multiple days, so they do build a relationship over time, but it's amazing when expectations are set for students, they will rise to the occasion. The next structure that we have put into place is of huge impact, we're using social media and trying to have a positive digital footprint by showcasing the good of all of the wonderful things that are happening in our classroom and providing forums for teachers to interact through social media. And so both Hillary and I have a hashtag that we use whenever we're tweeting or posting on Facebook, anything that we see that's wonderful in our math and literacy classrooms. We have Dr. Little Train to use the hashtag, we have, Dr. Tally uses our hashtag. So what's nice about that common hashtag is that you can follow that strand, and so we can see if I, every night I check, and I have a favorite of hashtag Lex One Literacy, and so I can, I automatically see all the wonderful things that were posted that day and can like them all and provide comments and feedback rather than having to search through the whole, my whole Twitter life to figure out where all the good of Lex One Literacy is happening. And then the Facebook page is a private Lex One Literacy Facebook page, it does not open to the public. We have all of the appropriate settings per communications, but this is a place where teachers can communicate, they can post questions, and really, we encourage them to post pictures and videos because, again, the show, don't tell, I can tell you how I do it, but if I show you a picture of my classroom library, or I show you a video of a small group, barring all appropriateness of student I show you a video of a small group, barring all appropriateness of student inclusion, that's what's really driving, oh, I can do that too. Oh, that's the person down the hall for me. Oh, that's somebody I took a summer course with. I can reach out to that person. So, building that network, that professional learning network, is really what we're going after with social media.
And so, we also provide summer, summer, summer learning opportunities, which is our more traditional approach. However, we're very careful to plan these opportunities so that teachers are engaged as a learner. They kind of live the experiences that their students would in their classroom. We have two two-day math workshop institutes. I just concluded with a group of 30 teachers this afternoon, and I'll welcome 30 more in a few hours for another two days.
And then, our homegrown writing institute is, this is something we've done three or maybe four years now. We have a four-day intensive where teachers ask, actually live the part of student, and we have consultants come in and provide opportunities for them to learn and grow in their, their reading and writing instruction. But again, the key is that they're living the structures and living the practices and encountering some problems that their students are going to encounter so that they can then troubleshoot and problem-solve right then, how they're going to deal when, and students encounter some of those predictable problems. All right. And then, a few other twists on traditional professional learning. I'm not going to show you any videos, but the one on the left is what we call a clinic, a clinic opportunity. And the clinic opportunity allows teachers to send in questions ahead of time. And then, these two lovely ladies, they're like Kathy and Hoda. They do like a talk show, and they say, oh, we have a question from so-and-so at Rocky Creek Elementary School about, you know, this phonics unit. Yes, and here's the answer to that question. So, teachers are piped in live from their school. There's no traveling. It saves them on spending, you know, instead of 45 minutes at a professional learning after-school, this may only take 15 or 20. So, we're trying to be conscientious in meeting them where they are and kind of taking away that, or allowing for that anytime, space, and place for professional learning to be happening, whether it be on social media. In fact, I just had to bow out of a Twitter chat that two of our coaches are hosting because I was here at the board meeting and didn't want to be rude. But we have, learning is going on all the time thanks to all of these shifts in professional learning structures. And then, on the right side is what we call a fair. This would happen to be a phonics fair, where we allow teachers to come together across the district and share what they're doing in a partic, on a particular topic, in this case, phonics, and learn and grow from each other. And again, showing, these are the tools that my kids have been responsive to. Showing, this is how I'm organizing my supplies and my materials. Showing, this is what my kids are able to produce rather than telling you, let's just, you know, you just need to do this because this is what we decided we were going to do.
We also hosted an elementary math make and take in May. We had about 50 teachers come out, and this was just a collaborative time for teachers to engage in meaningful discussion and make learning stations to be implemented in their classroom the next day.
And then, on the right side, again, leveraging some technology, we sent these two coaches to a professional learning opportunity in Charlotte. And on their way home safely, they recorded a video of the top things that they learned, posted to Facebook, and it was available for everybody within hours of them leaving the conference or the session. Now, that is powerful. And at SCASA, we charged the participants in our session to do the very thing safely on their way home from SCASA. Because when you go to a conference, by the time you get on the plane or get on the road and you're ready and heading home, it's all gone. Or you get back, and life happens, and everything that I thought I was going to do after going to the conference just never takes place. So, we're calling those traveling tips, and it is just fun. It's different. It's, it's just keeping kind of like some flavor in professional learning and not just the very traditional sit and get, here's a book, let me tell you about, but more engaging, and teachers are loving it. And then, our last structures are a little bit more traditional, but one thing that we are, we're really striving to do is to include teachers and as many professional learning opportunities as possible as presenter, as facilitator. Because, again, as a coach, as a district coordinator, I can tell teachers how I think I, how I think it should go, what research says is best practice, but the boots on the ground, the teachers that are actually doing it day in and day out have the most powerful voice. And so, we have encouraged, and I don't like to use required, but highly encouraged, coaches, anytime they present, that they need to have a teacher by their side who is the voice of the practitioner. And so, the example on the left is a second-year teacher at Lexington Elementary who is a model classroom teacher in her second year and is absolutely phenomenal. She's also teaching summer camp with her coach alongside her, presenting at an after-school PD. And then...
We also hosted a blended book study we brought together. We, well, we leveraged Google Classroom to bring together 50 elementary math teachers to engage in a book study around our Math in Practice by Sue O'Connell, and she's an expert mathematician.
So, that was Fast and Furious. You're welcome, Shane. And I always like to give Shane a hard time. But we did, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but we also encourage you to come on out. And if you want a list of, schedule of when lab sites are happening or where model classrooms are, we'd be happy to provide that because these are to-not-be-missed opportunities.
Board, any questions or comments? I think your enthusiasm is contagious, contagious. I can tell y'all really enjoy this, and it shows. So, thank you so much. I loved it. Thought it was a great presentation. We'll definitely be looking for it on our school tours. Okay, Dr. Little?
Nicely done, ladies. One of the things about this that I, that I do believe is transformative, that, that when you think about the innovative practice, it is that piece where you think, once you see the idea, you go, why haven't we been doing that for 50 years? But including students in that professional development piece has really been something that historically has, has never been done in professional learning experiences. And I love that not only are we including them, but we're surrounding our teachers with, with students during those learn, and really making them the center and the heart of that professional learning experience. That's, that's really nicely done. Thank you both very much. All right. It is my privilege and pleasure now to welcome Coach Bennett here with us tonight. We've been having lots of conversations over the last year about middle school athletics and things that we can do differently with middle school athletics. And, and Coach Bennett's going to talk to us about some things that we can look ahead and some things we can look forward to.
Then, we might need to order some pizza.
All right.
Our athletics update, you see right here, this is our Pleasant Hill volleyball team, Mediglen Middle championship basketball team. And our keys to success, it starts with y'all. It starts with the board. We appreciate your time and all you do. You empower us to have great teachers and coaches for our kids. Our superintendent, who won SC AAA Superintendent of the Year last year. Our senior leadership team, who's helped improve our coaches, which we hadn't been given a raise since 1998. Our principals and ADs, faculty and staff, parent, community involvement, is y'all talk about all the people that are invested in our children. As a matter of fact, I think Dr. Little hit a basket today, Young Fine, on Twitter. The first three-pointer ever at Beachwood Middle.
It only took me 10 tries. Only took me 10 tries.
Here's some things we're focused on. This is what we're discussing. And I traveled to Fort Mill last year and watched it. When you get enough numbers in your bigger, your larger middle schools, having a seventh and an eighth grade team, say, in volleyball, in basketball, even in football, it's tough to cut kids because you don't know when a kid's young, what they're going to turn out to be. We're looking at intramurals. We're discussing that with the high school league, with sixth graders, middle school athletic conference, we're going to touch on in a second, participant and spectator safety. We had a meeting today on that. We met with the recreation department. We're going to meet again. We don't want to interfere with them. We want to have a great partnership with the recreation department. You can see their numbers here in Lexington, fall, winter. Look at the number in the spring when you got baseball and soccer. So, we want to find times in there where they have a little bit of dead period, and we can do some, possibly some intramurals. But we want to have a great partnership with the high school league and our recreation department. There's some of our Warhawks right there.
Go Warhawks!
And we'll talk about them in a second. We're going to have, Dr. Little had a great idea. You know, he's, he says Carolina, he talks about the Tar Heels. We're still educating him a little bit, by the Tigers and the Gamecocks down here in South Carolina. But he said, we're going to have eight middle schools. Why don't we do our own conference? Pillion playing volleyball, Gilbert playing B-team baseball. It's pretty cool out at Gilbert A. They have a B-team. Don't have as many students as their big schools, but they still have a B-team. Pleasant Hill with basketball. See those numbers? If we had a seventh and an eighth grade team, we'll have double those numbers with our kids. New middle school conference. So, when we had the meeting and I said, all right, Dr. Little's giving us the charge. Let's form our own conference. The old pack got upset, and then, we had a young athletic director, assistant principal, say, hey, why don't we get Sandhills and Batesburg-Leesville Middle? And then, come in and be with Pillion and Gilbert, and then, we're going to take White Knoll Middle, which is our next smallest. We're going to have two divisions, five in the large, five in the small, but we're not going to call them that. We're going to call them the North and South. And we haven't settled on this logo yet. We got to get, probably y'all's approval on it. But you'll look at the teams right here, the middle schools that we have. Eight of them are ours. Mediglen Middle, going around the horn, Pleasant Hill, Lexington Middle, we'll talk about that one in a second. Gilbert Middle, Pillion Middle, White Knoll Middle, Beachwood, Carolina Springs, and the two we're bringing in, Sandhills and Batesburg-Leesville. Five in the North, five in the South. We're going to have jamborees in volleyball, in basketball, in football. You know what's going to happen with this middle school conference? Less money spent on travel and larger gates. More money for the kids. So, that's what we're real excited about, that we're going to have, we're going to have bigger gates and less money on travel. So, we're real excited about that. The Lexington, is what we're going to call it. We met today on this. This is two things we're talking about. Eighth grade and under accompanied by a parent or a guardian at a game, and just kids running wild. Also, the clear-bag policy, a lot of school districts are going to that.
I think Lexington Five just announced they're doing that.
They are. We talked today, what we're going to do is get our middle school principals together, our high school principals together, form committees and get their opinions because, you know, I tell our ADs all the time, Jamie Clark is interning. Jamie, if you'll wave to everybody. He's a Lexington One product, rising senior at Emory and Henry University, plays point guard, majoring in sports management, and he's been interning with us this summer. He's learned AD stands for all duties, all day, and after dark. I'm trying to get him to come and educate, and I hope we can. But these are some things we're looking at for safety for all our people at our ballgames. Y'all know this, we're still, this is the number of high school student athletes we have. Pillion's our smaller school, but look at the number of kids that participate. Gilbert, White Knoll, Lexington, Riverbluff, over 3,700. We'd like to keep getting that number up, get that number up in our middle schools. Our job is to keep improving the culture, not only in each individual school, middle school and high school, but across our district. And so, we got to keep working on. And y'all know we've got a couple of good rivalries. When Gilbert and Pillion play each other, y'all know that's a good rivalry. I've been to several of them. We stand on the court, we stand on the field. When Lexington and Riverbluff play, it can be in tiddlywinks, and they're all trying to win, you know? I've learned this, you better be standing on the winning side at the end of that game, no matter what the sport is. We want to keep improving the culture where when we play each other in the playoff game, those kids are pulling for each other rather than pulling against each other. That's our challenge because it's a great rivalry. And I'm going to tell you this, through all the years of doing this in athletics college and high school, going on 35 years, we're blessed. We are truly blessed in this district. And that's why kids are wanting to get in this district, because of the people and the teachers. And so, we thank you for what you do. Because athletics, it's about academics and arts and athletics, and I don't know about y'all, but if you played any sport, you learn a lot from your coaches. You learn a lot from your teammates. That's why we want to have more teams, where we have more kids involved, they can learn lessons for the rest of their life. Because even when the bell rings, a lot of teaching goes on after that bell. Thank y'all very much. Any questions?
So, I guess one of the confusing parts for me has always been B-team this, or C-team that, or whatever it may be. It seems like it's very dependent upon the sport. Does this kind of seek to unify that to where essentially, there is no B-team or C-team? It's now middle school, and however that may be designated?
Well, in football, see, it all goes back to, it's kind of like in football, you start doing your techniques. All that was passed down from old Bear Bryant at Alabama. A six technique, a seven, a four eye. Same thing in C-team for football, but in baseball, it's called B-team. So, it can be very confusing. But what we would love to do down the road is have, I think, Dr. Little's wife in the, in the grocery store. Mama said, there's 42 girls trying out for volleyball at Pleasant Hill. They're going to keep 12. And that breaks your heart because we had 12 on the seventh grade team and 12 on the eighth grade team. We're keeping 24. So, that's what we want to do. We want to continue to grow it, and it can be confusing, Doc.
So, you're saying divide by grade level. So, seventh grade has a, a team, eighth grade has a team? Okay, okay.
That way, we get more, get more kids participate.
Yeah, absolutely.
That can be a life changer for a lot of those kids. I mean, if you miss that one opportunity, you don't try again.
That's right.
So, this is very commendable.
Well, thank you, Coach Bennett, and thank you, Jamie. We hope you've learned something since you've been here. We're glad to have you come back. And when you graduate, you just call Mr. Stacy right there and put your job application right in. Dr. Little?
Thank you. All duties, all day, after dark.
AD, AD, AD.
All day. I just wrote it down, after dark. That's good.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, again, I thank you so much, Coach, for your leadership in middle school athletics. That's probably been one of the biggest shifts in terms of conceptualizing athletics.
I love it.
Is that our middle schools, we just do it differently, and we need to make some tweaks to it because we just, I think the feeling is that we just don't have enough kids participating in the middle school level. We need more kids participating at the middle school level. It is solely about two. It's about the kid in the seventh grade that's, you know, 411 and, and 75 pounds. By the time they become a junior high school, they might be 63 and 250 or something. Or you see, you see that person that is the 13th-best kid, and they don't get an opportunity. And as our middle schools grow, and this is something that we, we talk a lot about in terms of middle schools, I want to be, I want to be clear about this, please. So, when you, when you talk about big middle schools, so Mediglen Middle at 1,200, and you have, Beachwood will not be far behind, and Pleasant Hill will catch back up, and those three in particular. But you also have Gilbert's growing and, 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 you know, White Knoll's growing. Guy talked about that. You see this stuff happening. Lexington Middle School will be a very large middle school too, again. If our kids don't feel connected at the school, and our kids, you know, are anonymous at the school, then our growth becomes our detriment. Right? So, what we want to be able to do is even though we're growing, we're still understanding and acknowledging each individual child. And, and middle school athletics is a way to do that. Fine arts, obviously, is another way to do that. And we want to get participation up across the board in all those programs. So, you know, Coach talked about when, when, when the school bell rings, there's still a lot of teaching that gets done. Well, there's a lot of that when you go out to the band field. There's a lot of that when you go and you're in the drama club. And there's a lot of that when you're going and you're, and you're playing volleyball or, as Naomi's doing, playing softball and basketball. And, I mean, those are, those are essential elements to our program, and we want to make sure that we have more participation across the board. Because I think about kids, and I don't know about y'all, but my middle school experience was tough. It was hard. It was hard being the third child and, and, you know, in the seventh grade, and, you know, your feet were bigger, and you, you know, you were tripping and all this kind of stuff, and you, you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it was, it's an awkward time. I don't mean to like have my, my, you know, true confessions of a superintendent here, but, I mean, but it is a very awkward time for our kids, and they need to be connected but, um, I mean, but it is a very awkward time for our kids and they need to be connected across the board. They need to be connected in sports. They need to be connected in fine arts. They need to be connected in academics. And this is our way of, of beginning that process. Now, again, we're, we're still beginning. We are still in the beginning phases of this. It'll be the following year that we'll probably see some, some budget ramifications to that. But we want to really study this and, and get down into the nitty gritty about kids being a part of their school and being connected and known throughout the whole campus.
And Dr. Little, I just want to reiterate that. As of three weeks ago, I will never have a middle schooler again. But you're right, middle school is so weird and awkward and challenging and the more we can do to make sure every kid has a place, whether it's on robotics or archery or student government or mock trial or art or band or orchestra or football or basketball, I think that is so important for their self-esteem and their motivation to go to school and to, you know-
No doubt about it.
Because there's, there's a coach that's expecting them to be there or there's a, a robotics teacher that's expecting them to be there. I mean, I just think that is so very important. So I'm so glad to see that we're doing this because the more places we can create for these students, especially at our school, at our middle schools that are getting so large. I mean, you're right, it is so easy for a middle schooler to walk down the hall with their head down and nobody knows they're there.
That's right.
And, and that's, that just breaks my heart. So thank you for doing this.
Also, from when I was a working mom, when my girls were in middle school and my children went from daycare to nothing. And all of a sudden, they're coming home from school because they age out of daycare and if they don't have after-school activities, they're just kind of home. And that's a really strange, that gap. And I think this, well, I think the parents will love it because it helps them, you know, go merge that gap from daycare to just, you know, there's nobody at the house until 5:30 or 6:00. And it gives the kids, they're not just gaming and watching TV and it gives them something to do with adults present. So I, I think it's great.
Good deal. Thank you very much, Coach, for all that and we appreciate all your effort and all you do for our, for our kids. And now let me brag on Coach Bennett for just a second. You know, the one thing you can never question Coach Bennett's heart and about where his priority is because his priority is all about the kids. And if you have any conversation with Coach Bennett, at some point during that conversation, he's going to tell you it's all about the kids. And so thank you, Coach, for all of your work. All right, Mr. Caldwell, I believe you have, you want to talk, talk us through-
Wait a minute. Mr. Caldwell has the next three items? I have a Laura bar. I can break it into 40 pieces if we all need a snack.
I think he's just going to highlight some of these pieces since they're a first read for the board. Mr. Caldwell, you had talked about the tobacco policies.
That was my first idea. Three very uplifting, riveting presentations.
Never going to talk about tobacco.
So I'm going to keep that torch going. If I may, Dr. Little and Madam Chair, members of the board, if I could combine with your permission, these three items into one. It is about the updates to our tobacco policy. In April, the Youth Access to Tobacco Prevention Act of 2006 was updated and we were mandated to make some changes and have those in place by August the 1st. You will notice that the, when you look through your packet, that the, there are three separate policies. One called ADC Tobacco-Free School District, Policy GBED Tobacco-Free Workplace, and Policy JICG Tobacco Use by Students. Ms. Hill spoke a moment ago about the School Board Association streamlining the policies. This is not an example of that. Those three policies have the exact same language, whether it's talking about the tobacco-free district or the workplace or for students, it is the exact same language. The, you will also notice that our original policies that are currently in place, at its heart, has the components of the, of the Tobacco Prevention Act from 2006, what the School Board Association has suggested and following the state's lead on that. It has strengthened the language. It's given some, a more precise definition of tobacco products, of alternative nicotine products. It also has the way that we notify our parents, notify our, our schools is more clearly defined, but you won't find a wholesale change in either of the policies. So I present them all three as one because again, all three have the exact same language and I am bringing those forward to your first reading for your reaction and any questions that you may have and would hope to get an approval on these at our next meeting. So at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I spoke with Ms. Hill about it earlier. Is there any chance we could change the heading of these? Because I'll be honest, tobacco-free does not cover what's going on in this day and age.
Well, certainly at the, at the board's pleasure, we could, we could do what you-
We can or is that, that was kind of handed?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that. This is the, this is the model policy, you know, headed down from the School Board Association. In it, it does talk about alternative nicotine products.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it seems like it should be nicotine-free because sometime, I know nicotine's a derivative of tobacco, but I think the issue is the nicotine that is in all this-
So you're suggesting the policy's name be nicotine-free school district and not tobacco?
Well, I don't know. It just doesn't seem, tobacco just doesn't encompass it.
We can certainly follow up with the School Board Association. To be honest, they're very honest about the fact that they had to throw this together very quickly to meet the legal requirements because the law passed with a defined deadline for districts of August 1st. So we can certainly ask the questions.
I know. We were talking to Mr., to Dr. Guyton earlier. I mean, he's seeing this every day, these young, young kids who are dueling and they're addicted to this stuff and it's just, it's, it's happened so fast.
Yeah. And this, this will kind of tie in. Coach, you might want to go ahead and order that pizza. We're going to be here for another. I'm about to preach for the next half hour, so go ahead and get ready.
No, it's not.
So, so one question we've got to answer as part of this policy. And I'll be honest, I don't have the answer for this. So in here, you mentioned mandatory enrollment, Tobacco Prevention Education or Association Program. What if as a part of that program, there's nicotine gum or nicotine patches that are prescribed to a child less than 18 years of age with a doctor's order or a, I'm not saying Dr. Guyton's order, but with a doctor's order? Can a student come on campus with that gum, with that nicotine patch? And I, and trust me, I know you, you know, you're looking at me like, shut up. Because I don't know. I don't either.
I wouldn't have said it that way.
So that's one question we've got to answer is can a child be allowed to have that on campus? Because that kind of goes to your point of nicotine-free. If you change it from tobacco-free to nicotine-free, we got a, we got a quandary there.
Yeah. I hadn't even thought of that, Dr. Guyton.
So that's, that's one thing we, we got to think through. The second thing is how do we differentiate or what's the mechanism if there's a suspicion that that jewel doesn't contain a nicotine cartridge but contains a THC cartridge? Because-
Nobody knows.
You won't know. It's going to smell like cotton candy. And there's a reason it smells like cotton candy and as a parent, you should be completely ticked off about this because there is a absolute industry waging war on your children. You should be ticked off. We'll talk about the fact that they're going to be six miles down the road and if they're listening, I think I would speak on behalf of the board, say, we're interested to talk to you about how you're going to keep jewels out of the school. I guess this is on YouTube. I don't know. So there, there's a couple of things to answer there because this is a, this is a real, real problem. I agree that it shouldn't be punishment, punishment, punishment. And, and that's what I like in, in what we see here is that there is a recognition that these children are being victimized. At the same time, they're making a conscious decision to do this and so there has to be consequence for that. But at the same time, there is somewhat of victim mentality based off of the way the marketing and such has transpired against them. So, you know, bravo to recognition of that. But just a couple of points to, to kind of make notice of.
Yeah. Thank you. I think we're very blessed to have Dr. Guyton and Dr. Powers. And if I could just ask them, since this is first reading, if the two of them will really help us with this because it is, it's, it's coming at us so fast and the kids, they just, I hear all the things they do to get the jewels and how they have the jewels at school and it's just, it's just crazy. They're just, they're really marketing to them. It's really sad. Anyway, thank you. Any other comments or questions about the tobacco policies board? Okay. Anything else, Dr. Little, on your section?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I just, to let you know, I think everybody attend, pretty much attended graduation. It was just absolutely wonderful and I think all of our principals just have it down to a, just a fine science. And I tell you, the student speeches and even Dr. Little's speech, which we heard five times, was, they're just great speeches, just very awe-inspiring. Board, I sent it out to you this week. Dr. Tally so kindly has proposed a school visit schedule for us for next year. She is based that on kind of when we last visited some of those schools. And so, you know, if you'll let us know if that'll work for you. And we're trying to send it out early enough so that everybody can attend because I think the school visits are so important. And lastly, 16.0, our items for board information. We have had an item added here and is, is Ms. Gaskins here? She, there she is. She has added 16.3, which will be the grant award report. And how often will we see that, Ms. Gaskins?
Ms. Betsy Crick has done provide that quarterly.
Quarterly. Okay, great. So that's going to come through, Ms. Gaskins. So if you have any questions about that, just let Dr. Little know and he'll work with Mary and, so that's a new thing that's being added. And anything else, Board, before we move on? Everybody tired? And I, this, we're only in one meeting this month. Yes. So we will now adjourn.